Yeah.
A call to order, roll call. Chairperson Charles Pieschenbaker.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Joanna Gaines.
Present.
Rebecca Bowlin.
Here.
Sandra Flowers.
Present.
Robert Larry.
Yeah.
Thomas Maylin.
Yeah.
Robert Power.
Here.
All present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. We have one name for a moment of silence. It's Frances M. Camara of Heatherwood Nursing Home in Newport, formerly of Middletown. Passed away at Newport Hospital on Saturday, May 22. Ms. Camara was a graduate of St. Catherine's Academy and had attended Salve Regina College prior to starting a family. She was the mother of the late Daniel Camara and six children, including Rogers High School Guidance Clerk Debbie Gilson. Thank you. Now, the microphone's over for public comment. Wendy, is there anybody?
All right. Jennifer Jackson.
Good afternoon. My name's Jennifer Jackson. I reside at 38 Dudley Ave with my husband, Mitchell, and my two children, Felicity and Elijah. I have came here before regarding the flooding in my yard as it still continues to happen. Friday's flood, I mean Friday's rain, I had a speech wrote out. Of course, I forgot it because, you know, Murphy's Law. But the rain on Friday caused extreme flooding. We were told there was a breach in something to do with the contract, the construction, and it flooded my yard, my neighbor's yard, extremely. One of the neighbor's basement, there's a house at the corner of Dudley and Hillside that the garage is still submerged underwater, adding more water with the rain that just recently came yesterday, today. And I'm here because I keep coming, I keep calling, and I know everybody says, yeah, we know, we're looking into it. And unfortunately, I don't have, I've set my concerns and I just haven't heard any reply as to what's going to happen to help repair the issues. I know it may not be a priority to some of y'all because you guys have great responsibilities, but for me and my neighborhood, our lives have all been, what's the way, displaced because of the flooding. Like, we can't enjoy our yards. And I know it's not important about my pool, but to those two children, it's very important for me to get that pool up because that's their summer, that and the yard. If it ever dries out and I can fix all the divots from the flood, because when your yard floods, you get great big old divots. And if you try to walk straight across, I don't know how many times they've fell and I've fell just walking because of the flooding, it causes holes in your yard. And I'm just here to, for my neighborhood, because I've also asked to be put on the agenda because a lot of people from my neighborhood would like to talk and communicate with the school committee and allow you guys to communicate back to us. I do apologize, nervous. And, you know, I'm the voice for the neighborhood because I'm the loudest voice in the neighborhood. And we just want to know, is there a plan in the making? And is somebody going to let us know? Because we have lost the form of communication. And we just want to know, is there anything that's going to be done? And we understand construction, of course, has to stop before you can start fixing. But nobody said, hey, yeah, it was a boo-boo from the construction. Yes, we are going to have a plan in the future once construction, I guess, take responsibility and say, we are going to figure this out and fix it. And I still don't even know if the flooding's going to stop after construction. I don't know if they set up a drainage along the Dudley Ave back line of my fence because if you don't, it's just going to continue flowing downhill and flooding our yards. And I just stand here before you guys looking for answers, somebody to let us know, even if it's a call later or, or anything. I know you're not allowed to talk, but I just wanted to let you know. I just wanted to come say and say, you know, I haven't forgotten you guys and I do appreciate everything, but...
We haven't forgotten you.
Well, it feels like it because I don't...
Yeah, I know. I could think of the story the other day.
Yeah, but that's my point.
We'll, we'll get it straightened out.
I thank you and appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Any other person wishes to go to the microphone? Charlie?
Yep.
A school nurse teacher, Carolyn Martin, has presented a documentation and wishes to address the committee. She may not be here yet. She's going to be late and relative to the personnel cut of the nurse. And you may wish to take that under Personnel Actions under Budget 14.
Okay. Thank you. Remind... I have the honor of presenting the plaque for the teacher, District Teacher of the Year 2014. Alan Bernstein, would you please come to the podium? Alan started his teaching career at Newport Public Schools in September '88 as a teacher of music, grades three through 12. Alan continued his teaching career as an exceptional and motivating teacher. And whereas Alan was appointed district-wide supervisor in November '14, 2001, and district-wide supervisor of the arts, September '14, 2005. And whereas Alan has increased the rigor in the curriculum while encouraging his students to achieve at the highest level. As whereas Alan has been recognized within the Newport Public Schools, is community and statewide teacher of band orchestra at Rogers High School, orchestra at Thompson Middle School, strings at Cranston Calvert, is the school department's supervisor of art, and has been with the district for 25 years. Alan received his Bachelor of Music with highest honors and Master of Music at the University of Rhode Island. And whereas Alan Bernstein is a professional composer and arranger with pieces published by Tempo Press, Ludwig Masters, and is a professional bassist...
Bassist.
Bassist. Thank you. Performing weekly with local and national artists, including Mac...
Kupkala.
Kala. Mike Rensie, Artie Cabral, George Masso, to name a few. Is a board member of the Newport Art Museum Education Committee, the Marley Briggs Theater Company, and the Rhode Island String Teachers Association. Whereas Alan was selected in 2010 to conduct the Rhode Island Music Educators Junior Division All-State Orchestra, he has been the music director for Rogers High School annual musical productions. Alan has developed collaborations between Newport Public Schools and the Newport Music Foundation Festival, Newport Restoration Foundation, Newport County Preservation Society, Salve, University of Rhode Island, Rhode Island College, Marley Bridges Theater Company, Common Fence Music, and the Navy Band Northeast. Also, Alan developed for Rogers High School Arts Showcase, providing workshops and presentations in the arts for Roger students. Also, the Rogers High School Jazz Ensemble and Orchestra consistently earn outstanding ratings at annual music festival performances in various locations, including New York, Montreal, Orlando, Bermuda, and Washington. Whereas Alan has proved himself to be a role model to the high school community by his dedication and professional manner, therefore, be it resolved, and Alan Bernstein be commended by the Newport School Committee as the 203, 2013, no, 14 Newport District Teacher of the Year, and as the Newport Public Schools nominee to be the Rhode Island Department of Education for consideration as the 215 Rhode Island Teacher of the Year. Therefore, be it also that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official records of Newport School Committee and the original be presented to Alan Bernstein as an expression of our appreciation for his performance as a truly professional and outstanding member of the educational community and as one who has gained the respect of those whom he has served so well. Well, thank you all. I'm humbled. Well, I just want to thank you all for coming here to support me in this. It means a lot to me. I want to thank my wife Karen and my mom and all of my students for, you know, for all the support they've given me over the years and for, you know, the great music we've, we've created here. So I thank you all very much.
May I have a motion to accept the...
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Alan. I have in front of me certificates of achievement in the music program, all-state ensembles and festivals. Yes, because I'm going to sign them. I'm asking her to do them because I haven't signed them all. I'll sign them while you present them. How long do I give you to sign them?
Okay. Do I need to go to the mic?
This group is for all-state. Chase Segley. In recognition of earning a seat in the Senior Division Band in the 2013 Rhode Island Music Educators Association All-State Music Festival. Congratulations. Now, there's another one here for Chase Segley. This is for Jazz Ensemble, but you can't have it yet. He has to sign it. Okay? All-State Music Festival recognition for William Chilton. Jazz Ensemble, William Chilton. And that one is... Louis, Tyler Louis. Is he here? Well, he... She? Would you, you want to? Abby Wisland. I didn't see her. These are for, Tyler's is for Senior Division Orchestra. Abby's is for Junior Division Treble Chorus. And we have Taylor Stoffel. Okay, for Senior Division Orchestra. Okay. Don't go anywhere. Got a lot to go yet. Thompson Middle School, Pearl Emerson. So, this certificate says in recognition of earning a seat in the Junior Division Mix Chorus, but I remember the solo voice of an angel. And it's, I just keep rolling here. Congratulations. Tyler's, thank. Junior Division Treble Chorus, All-State Music.
Thank you.
Michael Barvey. Every day, there's another honor, right? Michael was inducted last night into the National Junior Honor Society. Congratulations. Pathways to jazz, that sounds interesting. Chase Segley. This was an event hosted at Salve and featuring guest artists, Anna Cole. Pathways to jazz, Isaiah Brown.
He's not here today.
Okay. William Chilton. Dori Colley.
She's not here.
Patrick O'Donnell.
He is not here.
Michael. Want to say the last name?
First name is...
Aaron Barry. Are you glad to get that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at you. You're good. Thank you. Sure? You sure?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Okay. Chase, you might as well just stay up here. Come on back. Now, this is in recognition of earning a seat in the Senior Division of the Jazz Ensemble. Is this two? Wait a minute.
Wait, there's more.
We got another one. Isn't it? Oh, now, this is different. The 2013 Cruise Festival, Music Festival Award Explorer of the Seas. Quite impressed? You were on that cruise as well. You just called him Mickel.
You just called him the bad guy.
No, I'm calling you the greatest top player I've ever seen. I don't know. The only person that would understand all this is Mr. Bernstein.
I think he should come up because he's... Will he come up and read it?
Yes, please. This you would have to accept because it's for the entire Rogers High School Eclectic Chamber Ensemble.
Any members of the Eclectic Chamber Ensemble would come forward and accept this?
We have the names here of the rhythm section. Devon Mello piano, Sam Fitzpatrick percussion, Ben Straka percussion, Dori Colley drums, Miguel Arumbari electric bass, Tyler Louis upright bass, and Joe Duzinski.
Duzinski.
Duzinski guitar.
Yeah, Joe, why don't you accept this one?
Okay. Rogers High School Vocal Ensemble, Stephanie Martin, Abby Wisland, Ashley Murray, Sophia Wall, and Morgan O'Donnell. Okay. The middle school chorus directed by Vicky Lapree in recognition of earning an assessment of excellence in the 2013 Rhode Island Music Educators Association. I love saying that. Do you? Okay. There you go. Thank you. Thompson Middle School Band, who is just in here. Mr. G, yes, the kids from...
That's right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Don't go anywhere. This, you can accept for the orchestra, right? Oh, okay. That's for the assessment of excellence, superior.
Superior.
Superior for the orchestra. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Not bad for no rehearsal.
No, that's right.
We'll take a little break so everybody can leave if they want to. Oh, okay. We're going to go on to strictly school committee business. No more awards. So if anybody wishes, who's getting award would like to take off, you're welcome. Certainly clears out a room. Yeah, she's a nice lady. Esther, yeah. Do you want to listen to the nurses' tone now since they're here?
Sure. Yeah, Carol, Wendy, Caroline Martin. Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Excuse me. Here, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Could you just indicate your name and your title, please?
Sure. Okay. My name is Carolyn Martin and I'm one of the school nurse teachers in Newport. I'm currently the school nurse teacher at Sullivan School. I am here to say a few words in opposition to the proposed elimination of a school nurse teacher position. Newport School Department currently has five full-time school nurse teachers to meet the needs of the 2,032 students in the system, as well as roughly 250 staff members. We maintain health records and provide population-based screening for the Clooney School, which currently houses 201 students. We do our job, ever mindful of our nursing licenses and liability, and have the expertise and knowledge of the individual medical needs of our student population. Our student population is a very unique one with tremendous physical and mental health needs. Yes, in addition to the list of services we provide, as noted on the handout, I hope everyone received one, we also play an important role in the growing area of mental health issues for our overburdened social work staff. While two school nurse teachers at Pell may sound adequate, we wonder how we can provide the same quality of services with less staff. If we are required to cover the new charter school, then we will have Clooney and that school to provide population-based screening and maintenance of health records. The numbers will not change and neither will the liability. We have recently been informed that the Department of Ed is eliminating the student health cards. This means that all student health information will now be recorded electronically. This would indicate that we somehow transition and enter and maintain every health record of the 2,032 current students onto Aspen. Since we do not have clerical help with this, we will be required to do so on a daily basis. We cannot safely leave one nurse in the office of Pell for the 900-plus students with recess, medications, medical procedures, asthma, allergies, and other needs while a second nurse leaves to cover other schools. We propose keeping the extra nurse to act as a district nurse, to be available to cover where and when needed. This nurse would service Clooney School, the charter school, cover all absences, teach our mandated family life classes, and provide the mandated population-based screenings, which include vision, hearing, dental, and scoliosis for all students, as well as documentation and following up on any referrals. If maintaining a full-time position seems unnecessary, perhaps you would consider half-time position, especially during this upcoming transition year, so that we may continue to maintain the level of care needed to protect our nursing license. This would offset the cost of agency nurses who are not always available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move on to item number 4.1, Student Council Update. Gabriel?
Hi. Well, the school year is pretty much over sadly in the next two weeks for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Our graduation is Friday. Our prom is tomorrow. The juniors had a successful prom a couple weeks back and looked like a lot of fun. Their sports have been good, but they're coming to a close as well. And everyone's kind of readying themselves for next year, wherever that may take them. So, and everyone's taking finals or has taken finals. For seniors have already done so, but their underclassmen are going to start taking them in the upcoming weeks. And AP exams are over, so it's just a home stretch, basically. So, that's it.
Gabriel, before you leave, on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to thank you for your presence, being present at all these meetings and your comments.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Now, you and Mr. Ferris have to introduce the next year's...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Gaines.
Where are you going next year, Gaines?
Loyola University, Chicago.
Great, great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Our new president, Allison Thompson, is in Washington for History Day, and I think they're coming back tonight. Our vice president is Katherine Hermes.
Any relationship?
Our secretary is Elizabeth Murphy, and our treasurer, David Richards, is not sick today. But that's our new student council.
Thank you. Next item is the Consent Calendar. We have approval of minutes and Personnel Actions. Does anybody wish to extract any items from the Consent Calendar? Do you, Mrs. Gaines? You raise your finger.
I just wanted to talk about the recalls. Can we just...
So you want to pull Personnel Actions?
Personnel Action, yes.
I move acceptance of the Consent Agenda minus Personnel Actions. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mrs. Paul, Mrs. Paul?
I just wanted to, I'm uncomfortable, like, doing the recalls until we really get the budget fully set. It's, you know, but on the other hand, you're going to end up spending money to pay for unemployment for people that you don't recall by July 1. And I know that, I think these generally only refer to the high school, of which we discussed quite a bit last week, who is going to get recalled the last time we met. So I am going to support recalling the high school teachers, because I know you cannot get your schedule set, start redoing the kids' schedules until you know exactly who's coming back. Is that correct, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I mean, we've gone ahead on...
And assume that they're, that they're coming back.
Yeah, I, I'm always very careful about these recalls. You understand that.
Right.
And I'm absolutely certain that these folks will be needed for next year. And then as, as the budget situation progresses, we'll have to take a look at what might, what might be available. I certainly would like to, to bring back all the people that we can bring back as quickly as possible. I know it's stressful for everybody. So, so these are the, these are the folks that I'm recommending at this point in time, be, be recalled, you know, if, if more things happen between now and July 1, you know, maybe we could have a special meeting. But at this point in time, this is what I feel comfortable with.
Mrs. Gaines?
In, in the recall process, as we progress, is there an order for which you might be recalling teachers? I'm, I'm thinking particularly of the nurse. I agree that the numbers aren't changing, even though schools are closing. They still have to take care of the same number of kids. And I'm concerned that we are going to be falling short of services for kids if we don't recall another school nurse.
That is a, is a, is a situation that the school committee would have to take action on. As you know, the nurse position was eliminated during the, during the budget process, as we talked about, and we've talked about that since, since the Bonne referendum. So that's a decision that the committee will have to make. But at this point in time, there is no money for that position, nor a... there is no money for that position, nor a lot of the other positions that we do have moving forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we vote on the recall separately from the others?
It is separate.
Yeah, we will do the recall separate from the, okay, there's no, okay, I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, Mrs. Ball?
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the nursing situation. I mean, you just have to spend a day at the school to see how many medically fragile students there are there, and how much time is consumed sometimes working with those students. You know, we have students here that we use feeding tubes and all kinds of different, you know, like, very fragile diabetics, epileptic students, and I wonder about, you know, liability. We always have to be concerned about liability. And I know that we, you know, this year was extraordinary in terms of what we had to do for hiring out nurses, but it's $235 a day through the nursing service to have a replacement come in. And every time a child goes on a field trip that's got a medical necessity, a nurse has to accompany that child. So, we spent, I know we expended quite a bit last year in nursing and for the substitutes. And anytime, you know, they have, every nurse has 15 days of sick leave, not that they use it, but, you know, you start adding that up, and I just wonder what, you know, like, cost effectiveness, the liability issue, and we just need to really, you know, and then how do you justify, like, having somebody, you know, even if we just hired someone to cover the Clooney, I mean, we're legally responsible for that. So, I am concerned.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I too have some concerns about, you know, how much we're going to be able to cover with the people we have, and, you know, I think it's, you know, obvious that, you know, the numbers are not going down of kids. Certainly, it may be some savings in the fact that people are in, you know, one location and in his economy of scale. My thinking is, I would certainly want to, I'd like to revisit this in September, when we know who the kids are, what kind of medical issues we have, and, you know, what we're able to do as far as coverage with those schools. I mean, I don't know who's been covering Clooney, but I'm guessing that that nurse is probably closer than Sullivan School or the new Pell School. So, there's a travel time in there also. So, I think there, you know, this issue may, you know, while I may support it at this moment, I think it bears looking into as far as whether or not, when we get to September and we see what we actually have, and see who the kids are in the district, and see where all the, you know, all the locations are, whether or not we're going to need more time.
So, can we just repeat your motion again to do, to hold?
No, I'm not making a motion. I'm just making a comment that I, you know, I may support that at this time, not putting somebody on, but I think that there's a point being made. We may need more services than two nurses.
Would you like a motion? In the interest of collaboration, is there any possibility that Clooney School can help in this situation?
They don't have, they don't have a nurse.
Yeah, I know by law you have to provide. I understand that. But as we are providing services for youngsters who are not, you know, directly under our watch, and then again, if we have, if a charter school form comes up, I mean, I'm just looking in the future and saying, are there any other possibilities? Or in the case of an emergency, is there any, this is just throwing out ideas now, any kind of collaboration with, say, if it's at Pell, that we can collaborate with Middletown? Just a thought.
I don't know any of those things at this point in time. I do know that the charter school will not be up and running this year.
This year anyway, at least we have that.
So, and my understanding is, is that we, and I'm not sure you can correct me if I'm wrong, that a school nurse goes to Clooney Wednesday afternoons. Well, half a day is my understanding, so.
Mr. Chairman, it's funny how I supported this new school, and all my comments look backwards based on the economics. We said we're going to do this, and if you look back at the things they said they're going to lay off, you said it was three custodians, and now it's going to be two. And now you want to bring back the nurse, and it's going to be no nurse. Pretty soon it'll be principals. Pretty soon it's going to be more and more people. I think it's like a bait and switch to public. You promised the public to do this thing, and now everything's coming back. And I think it's, I understand people's lives, but you promise one thing, you can't do another.
I will make two comments. Number one, we had already reduced one custodian as a result of the changes that were brought into place by the Pell School. So, although we're reducing two custodians this coming year, one custodian had already been reduced as a result of moving out of Sullivan. So, that's already been taken care of based upon when we said we would reduce by three. With regard to the nurse, that is not my recommendation, as you know, Mr. Leary, to add an additional nurse.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to be clear, you know, what I, my recommendation is when we get to September, we're going to take a look at what we have, you know, because sometimes there's unanticipated consequences that happen, and there may be things that come up that we have not contemplated. I mean, I clearly believe that, you know, we were moving forward and we had, you know, consolidation, and we can do those consolidations, but there may be some factors that enter into this when we come to September that we haven't contemplated. And alls I'm saying is that in September, I think we should go back and take a look at that again and make sure we're correct.
Could you make that a motion so we can move forward?
You want me to make that a motion?
Yeah, so we can get on with this.
I would make a motion that we revisit the school nurse teaching position in September to make sure that, whether we need it or not.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now go back to the original, the rest of the Personnel Actions. I need a motion for that?
Just recalls. I move we accept the recalls as recommended.
Mr. Chair?
Are you seconding it?
No, I'll second it, but I have a comment. I'm not going to vote for the recalls because I still think it's too early until we find out what the budget, what we have for this year for the deficit, if there's any, and what we have, so we can make some plans. Right now, we don't have any idea where we stand, really, and until everything gets firmed up, I'd rather wait.
So, could, so should we table this and view, after the budget, and vote on this after the budget?
What are the implications?
I don't, we can't do without these folks. The high school will not be able to run without these folks, as the school committee had already determined. You had made determinations, you put back a .6 science teacher. This has all been determined by the school committee. Now these recalls are just following along with what you had already said.
Does that make sense, Paul?
Yeah, it makes sense. I don't agree with it, but it makes sense.
Mrs. Gaines?
I wanted to be, wanted the superintendent to again reiterate. These recalls have already been determined as needed positions, necessary positions for the opening of school. Am I correct?
That's what I had said.
Thank you.
Based upon?
Based on schedule you have presently.
Based upon the school committee's actions in previous budget situations, yes.
Seeing no other hands on, I'll move the motion then, or ask for a vote. All in favor of the recalls, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, what's five, two? Now, I'm confused about these, these two have school budget fiscal year 2014, so help me out.
This first item is to talk about where we are in this fiscal year. As you know, there was a concern as to whether or not we would have a surplus or a deficit, or if we had a surplus, how big it would be, if we had a deficit, how big that would be. As you know, I have kept the school committee apprised of the fact that I thought we were right on the edge in terms of this. We had a spending freeze that began in March, I believe, and we did not implement the transfer to capital at that point in time. This information was presented in public meetings, and, but what we didn't have, what we didn't have available was a complete analysis from Joan Tracy, who is our Director of Administration, as to where we were going to be this year, at the end of the year. Today, at 11 o'clock, Joan finally gave me what she believes is best estimate as to what the audit would show at the end of this fiscal year. Joan herself was an auditor, and she has drilled down into everything, and that is why this has taken such a long time. I had a copy of the UCOA. It's 49 pages, God knows how many different lines in each one of those pages, but it is a behemoth. And Joan has been working on that behemoth all year long, and we've finally gotten to the point where we have a very good estimate. And you have that before you. It appears as though our revenue will exceed the budgeted amount by $161,292, okay? And that's a good piece of news. A lot of it is to do with the fact that we have some extra money from the Career and Tech Center, and some extra money from tuitions. So, we're to the good there. We, however, are running a deficit, as of today, of $250,060. So, that provides us with a net projected deficit of $88,768, which is less than one quarter of 1% of the budget. Less than one quarter of 1% of the budget. Now, I don't know whether or not, when everything flushes out, we will have this kind of deficit, less of a deficit or a surplus, because it just is that close. But Ms. Tracy has, I think, done an excellent job. It's taking a long time. And for those of you who don't know, these budget issues are fluid. We have kids coming in the district for tuitions. We have kids leaving the district for tuitions. We have tuitions for NACTEC that come in, and they go. And we have Impact Aid, which is a complete wildcard variable every year. And last but not least, we have Medicare reimbursement. The Medicaid reimbursement is based upon the kids that we have, the kids that come here who need those services. So, again, for those of you who are uninitiated, our budget isn't as cut and dry as perhaps the municipal budget or some other budgets that you see, because our budgets deal with real-life people. They deal with kids. And any kid that comes to us, we have to educate. And any kid that comes to us, we have to transport. And any kid that comes to us, we have to provide social services to. So, that's where we are today in terms of this year's budget. I personally don't recommend doing anything at this point in time, because we really don't know. It is just that close. Joan is here. Congratulations, Joan. Thank you for finally, at long last, nailing it in terms of where we are, and I know it's been a long, hard slog, and I've nagged you, and not too, I haven't yelled, but I've nagged you and come in your office more times than you wish to count, I'm sure. But thank you, Joan. Appreciate the work that you've done.
Any comments on that? It's a discussion item. We're talking last, the budget ends this year, is this August, right?
Yes, the budget that ends July, June 30.
We didn't have major expenditures, so we had to, we don't have to report anything to the state, is that correct?
My understanding, I don't see that we know with enough certainty. Neil, our attorney is here to weigh in on those situations?
Now that you have the information in hand, the statute does seem to address the situation, such that you need to notify the mayor of the city, you need to notify the state, and it does call for some type of plan to be thought about by the school committee and reported. And the plan, when it happens so late in a fiscal year, it can be as common sense and as simple as you're going to be requesting it from the city, and that you're going to be asking for it to be spread out over a year, or two, or three, in terms of the future budget makeups of the deficit that you are anticipating experiencing. You may recall in years past, probably in the early to mid 2000s, that you did have, actually, it was prior to Superintendent Ambrosi being here, you did experience a deficit, and you did talk in terms of spreading that out. It was a pretty big number, I think it was about 1.5 million, and you spread it out over three years, or at least that was the plan. So, I think you need to at least reflect upon some basic dealing with the situation and reporting that out, just so that you can comply and cross the Ts and dot the Is relative to the statute, now that you have some definitive information relating to it. I think that will satisfy your obligations under the statute if you did something, at least in that nature.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Gaines.
So, this is assuming that we do not appropriate the $347,000 right this year that should have gone to.
Yes, that has always been.
So, that's an assumption, right.
That has always been the assumption that has been made.
But my question to Neil is going to be, so how then, you know, like, appropriately, how do we notify, when we notify the city council, now that this came out today that we have 88,000, it looks like we're going to have a deficit, we owe them some kind of a notice within five days, and with that notice, because we have not committed, we have not voted to alter our policy yet, or, you know, to move those funds over, would our deficit look like 88,000, or is that deficit going to look like 88,000 plus 347?
You would have to take one action or another. If you, as a committee, decide to modify the one light item to apply to the other, then it would appear as if it would be the $88,000 number. If, as a committee, you decided not to, it would be a different number, obviously.
So, tonight, if we decide to do nothing, which is the recommendation, that number would have to look like 347 plus 88, correct? That's what we'd have to notify the city council.
Who's recommendation would that be?
You just, I think, Jack, you just said, my recommendation is to do nothing right now with this budget, to wait and see how it works out. So, what I'm saying is, we have to notify the city council.
If, in fact, the recommendation is to notify the city council, then I would suggest right now, you take the action to change.
That's what I'm asking.
If, in fact, you need to notify the city council with regard to this, then my recommendation is that you take the action to eliminate the capital transfer from the budget, because quite honestly, I would rather have that taken out than have that kind of a deficit. I mean, I think that that would be fiscally irresponsible to keep that money in and then report that as a deficit. We haven't spent the money. I don't think we, you know, I understand that there's a policy in place, but that money has not been spent. So, why would, it's like your house, when you don't have to spend the money on something in your house, and you're finding yourself in a problem situation in terms of your finances, you don't go ahead and spend the money on something in your house. So, my suggestion is, if in fact, there is a need to let the city council know that there is this deficit, that you take the appropriate action to remove the transfer to capital, and then let the city council know that the forecast is $88,000 deficit.
Anybody want to make a motion to suspend the policy?
Then, in informing the city council of the potential deficit of $88,000, our plan to correct that action would be to tell them that we're transferring money from correct that action would be to tell them that we're transferring money from the capital improvement account?
If you vote as a committee today to have already done that, that's not part of your plan. You would have already achieved that. You would have done that to get.
There won't be any deficit.
Eighty-eight thousand.
With the transfer, there would be no deficit.
Yes.
Eighty-eight thousand.
If you did not transfer, it would be the 88,000 plus the capital money that you didn't do. If you vote to switch the capital funds money, it reduces that down to a final deficit at the moment of 88,000.
At the moment. So my recommendation to the school committee is, you know, that in order to be fiscally responsible in terms of this, is that they vote to suspend the policy and transfer the money from the capital line transfer to other line items where we might be having a deficit. And, you know, Bobby, I've agreed with you, that I think we need to have a number of different approaches to deal with public financing. Capital improvements and hard costs for budget upkeep, tuitions, excuse me, personnel costs, and.
Keep adding personnel.
Pardon?
They keep on adding personnel.
Personnel costs and costs for curriculum-related things. So those are the things that we need to do. But when we can't fund the basic core, sometimes you have to take measures to accommodate. And I'm suggesting, as you've known, since at least March, when I was a bit concerned about this, I've always predicated my recommendations on, "Let's hold off on this." Now that we know what, and we just found out today, now that we know actually what the projected deficit is, I would recommend that just for, at least for this year.
Mr. Chairman?
I want to ask you, just how much are you recommending the transfer back?
The whole transfer of capital. That's what I would be recommending for this year.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we're sitting here knowing that we also have another issue, and that is the roof at Triplet School. And so, and there's money sitting in an account that was set there to fix capital expenditures. And if we move that money over and we come to the city and say, "Well, we've got a deficit of $88,000 as opposed to $388,000," you know, at the end of the day, something's going to have to be done with that roof, and it's either going to fall on our side or the city's side. If the building goes back to the city, they're going to have to take care of that roof, because they're not going to sell it with a roof that's not in good shape. If it's on our side, then we're going to have to pay for that roof. You know, if we need space for kids or a fallback plan, that building, we have to be able to use that. This is exactly, that building is exactly the problem we've got ourselves into in the past, is when we've put things off, you know, things fall apart, and then they say, you know, "The school department didn't do a good job, you know, keeping the facilities together." I'm the last person who wants to be sitting here suggesting that, you know, I'm going to go to the city and ask for a larger number than a smaller number, because I don't want to do that. But I can't ignore the fact that there's a problem sitting up on Broadway that somebody's going to have to address, however we do that. You know, I, you know, I'm just putting it out there. You can't say, "We've got this, and we moved that money over," and then who's going to pay for that, however that gets done? And if the city's going to pay for it, we're going to give the building back to them, it's not our problem, then terrific, then we're at 88. But I just, you know, knowing that we've got that issue there, and it's bouncing around there, and knowing that, you know, there's going to be some kind of fallback plan, because I've said to people in Newport, you know, when they say, "Well, suppose there's not enough space in the Pell School," I say, "Well, we've got a lot of other buildings. We don't have to sell every building." But that seems to be the obvious go-to building, but it also has a problem. Just my thoughts.
So I'm just trying to say again, if you don't have the money, we don't have the money, we're in a deficit situation, we don't have the money. We don't have the money. I want to say that again. We don't have the money. We have less money in a deficit situation if you don't transfer, if you don't stop the transfer to capital. If you continue with the transfer to capital, number one, I don't think that's going to be on this year's situation anyhow, but true to tell, you're going to be talking about a much larger number in terms of a deficit, which I don't have a way to make up. And I just think there's some fiscal irresponsibility if we do that. Granted, I would love to fix the Triplet roof, but it's not our school anymore. It won't be after September, or maybe, I don't know, but that's down the road. Right now, we're dealing with a potential, see, I don't know, if we're only 88,000, I don't know whether or not, after everything shakes out, we're not scraping by. But I do know, if you don't put the transfer to capital back in the regular budget, I do know that we're going to have a deficit. There's no question in my mind. So you make your decision, but I do think that the prudent thing to do in terms of responsibility for this year's budget is to suspend the rules and put the capital budget within the regular budget. So the reported deficit is only $88,000.
Mrs. Gaines?
Could we transfer a portion of the capital? For instance, $100,000 would cover the deficit.
It won't cover the deficit we need.
You said it's 88,000.
No. I beg your pardon.
Give the number, Jack.
I just told, I just said what.
It's not 88, yeah.
Mr. Farley, please. Keep the comments here at the table. Okay? Mr. Bailey?
Well, if we cut from this year's budget to capital improvements, and then we cut next year's budget, capital improvements, that's going to be over two years, approximately $700,000. Well, Rogers needs work to be done, and it just seems like we're going to be two years of doing nothing in the school system. Okay, we have Thompson all set, Pell's all set, and Rogers. And then Triplet, well, that might come into the mix possibly somehow, someplace, because if, and I don't know if it could be done in time, but we're just doing things we've done before. We're just always cutting everything else, and we're nipping at the edges. We don't look at what the problems are, and we don't look at everything, and that's my problem.
There's.
Charlie?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You know, we were tardy long on the Pell Options Committee about overcrowding, and we still, we have no idea if that's going to, the number's going to look, and I know your estimates are between 37 classrooms, or 30.
Thirty-six and 39.
Thirty-six plus the two, that's not counting the two preschools, so it's 38, 38 to 41 classrooms. And if we end up with more, there's only 39 there, we end up with two extra classes, I'm telling you, right now, your art rooms and your music rooms are going to be used up, or they're going to be on the stage, exactly what the community didn't want. And also, you know, I mean, we have an opportunity to have an early learning center and get grant money if that building were fixed up over there. It's like we're, you know, by not moving this money over, and I'm going to make a motion here that we move over 240, you know, enough to fix the roof right now, and maybe it'll go down, maybe it won't. But I made a promise, too, that we would, that's where those students are supposed to be going over to, and we don't, and that building is not available to us right now. There's a motion that's standing right now with this committee that said that if we didn't use the modular classrooms, that we were going to move the kindergartens over to Triplet. And that's the way the motion read, and that's the way it still stands until we do something about it. So in my book right now, we're supposed to be using that Triplet School next year, and we're not in a position to use it, and I don't want, come September, somebody to say, "Wow, wouldn't, I would have known they would all come back," because we've been seeing forever, they're going to come back, and we're going to need a place to house them.
We have some substantial financial problems moving forward.
Right.
Please understand that.
I know that.
Okay? The monies for the Triplet School in terms of the heating, electrical, all of those things, $90,000, maybe more, taken out of the budget, that's already out of there. You know, I would love to do all of these things, but when you don't have the money, where do you go? We keep talking about this and that. We can't have it all anymore, because we're in a very difficult financial situation. I don't even know whether or not, because of this late date, they'll even hold the price on the Triplet roof. I mean, this was supposed to happen a while ago, and it hasn't. So, please, I mean, I'm going to say this again, I really strongly believe that you're going to, we would jam up the district financially unless we took steps this year and next to defer any capital improvements. Now, we have money for this building, okay? Thompson is relatively new. We spent a lot of money on Rogers these past years, and Pell's brand-new. I understand that we have some roof issues, but I think the roof issues, you know, are not as important to the committee as making sure that there are teachers in the classroom, are not as important to the committee as making sure that there are reading books. So I say again, I recommend that we take the, as I have all along since March, suggested, you keep this over here, if we're in a good situation in July or June, then transfer it over. It doesn't appear as though we're going to be in that good situation.
You're asking for immediate transfer?
I'm asking for a transfer, yes.
Immediately or?
Immediate transfer, because if we don't do an immediate transfer, you're going to have to tell the city council that the dollar amount is 88,000 plus what, Joan?
363, 335, a total of $452,103.
That would be your difference. And so I'm recommending that you not go down that direction.
To straighten out things, if we're going to continue discussion, I need a policy change, so I need a vote on suspend.
Motion on the floor, Mr. Council?
Isn't that correct?
Motion on the floor, President Council?
There is no motion on the floor at the moment.
There's no motion on the floor? Wendy, is there a motion?
No.
Okay.
I need a motion to suspend the policy.
Regarding the.
Mrs. Dr. Flowers?
Regarding the transfer?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded to suspend the policy.
I want some discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Neil, you go through our conversation today and bring this, keep up this stuff and that.
Yes, you inquired of me today relative to votes on suspending policies. And in checking school committee policies, there did not appear to be any treatment of specifically suspending policies, per se, and my instinct was that, in light of that, perhaps, you'd have to defer to Robert's Rules of Order, which, if it's unstated, Robert's Rules tends to call for a two-thirds vote to suspend policy. However, and that was my original instinct, but in terms of reflecting on your question more in depth, when you read the school committee policies concerning the conduct of your business, that is actually policy number 1590, and it becomes very clear that it would not involve, in my opinion, a two-thirds vote, because it says, "When a quorum is present, a majority vote shall be defined as a majority of the votes cast, which is sufficient for the adoption of any motion," it uses the word "any" as a qualifier, "except those requiring a majority vote of the entire membership." In searching the school committee policies, I could only find two policies that required a vote of the entire membership, and those two policies involve, one where you're suspending the application of rules and procedures, which this is not, this is a policy, and the other is when you're actually amending one of your policies. And what that means, when you need a vote of the, a majority vote of the entire membership, that means that vote can only pass with a vote of four members, no matter how many members are in attendance. If you had only a quorum of four people, for those kind of votes, you would need a total of four votes, so unanimous on those. But relative to any other motion, including a motion to suspend a policy, it would be my opinion that it would be a simple majority of the members present that would carry that vote. Now, just from an historical standpoint, at one time, many, many years ago, there was a policy in place for the school committee that did call for a two-thirds vote to suspend policies. But these policies, probably in the 1990s or the 2000s, there was a move afoot to a uniform, uniformly adopt policies throughout the state, and this school committee underwent a restatement of their policies. I don't have the complete history on it or the year in which that occurred, but when the school committee adopted that restatement of policies, that essentially replaced the prior large, thick, blue book that existed, because I remember those, on my term as a school committee member, it was a very thick document, that was replaced by a more streamlined set of policies that has been in place since then. So the old policies get replaced, the new policies adopted, and any time a new policy is either added or amended, you take it up and deal with it as a school committee. So that's a little bit of a historical context. It is my opinion, Mr. Larry, after discussing it with you and researching it, that the vote to suspend the policy that you're dealing with, which, for the record, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it was stated, but I believe it is. We can identify that policy number shortly, but.
1590?
1590.
No, 1590 is not the policy you're suspending. You're suspending the adoption of the budget, which calls for a 1% allocation to the capital fund. That's the policy you're seeking to suspend, and we should just identify the policy number. I probably have it in my briefcase. So ultimately, though, it's my opinion that it requires a simple majority vote, Mr. Larry, that's my opinion of it.
Mr. Galvin, that's, and what we're talking about is for the, this budget year, correct?
For this budget year, and instead of complying with that 1% allocation to the capital fund that you included in your budget, you're seeking to, what the vote, I understand, that's being made, is to suspend that policy for this year only.
For this budget year.
Yeah, you're not modifying that policy, you're suspending it for this year's budget.
Correct.
Further discussion on the motion.
Can you repeat the motion?
Mr. Larry?
Shame on myself, probably to scoot me, not missing that, because I wasn't a policy for the longest time that it required a two-thirds vote, and not being carried over, somehow, maybe like, as Attorney Galvin says, it just streamlined, and I missed it. Unfortunately, when we do things now, it's line by line, you change it, and you have one or two readings, it used to be three readings. So I'm sorry I missed it, because I think it was a great idea, just to take your policy, make a policy, and just get rid of it, just like that, is, follows me, a two-thirds majority seemed like at least a more important way of doing it. So I will be voting as you suggest, Council.
Well, just from history, don't forget, that was, that adoption or adoption of the restatement of the policies was a long process that went through a.
Two years.
Long level of review before it was ultimately adopted, and I'm sure there are items that were in old policies that are not containing the new ones, that are difficult to know precisely which ones they are. Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, the policy that you're considering suspending is policy number 3110.
Okay. I'll call for a vote.
Is there a motion?
All those in favor of the motion?
Wait, you need to, what's the motion? Can you repeat this?
The motion was.
To waive, to waive the policy, and the second, Mrs. Dr. Flowers made it, Mrs. Gaines second.
To waive the policy?
To suspend, yeah.
Chair, if you want me to make one comment?
Yeah.
I'm going to be voting against the waiving of the policy. In my mind, why do we even have a policy if we can just, in one session, get rid of it? When we put something in, it takes over two meetings to put it in. You know, it's just, it's logical. Why even bother having it, so we can just change it every other day?
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Now.
What was the count?
Four-three.
Four-three.
Now, the motion is. Now, the motion is, now, we need, if we're going to transfer the money, we need to ask for a motion to transfer the money back into the operating.
You voted to suspend the policy, you need to take the actual?
I moved to transfer the money from the capital improvement to this year's budget.
Second.
The operating budget. The operating budget.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I hear Dr. Ambrosi loud and clear, and I agree, we are down to three buildings, and I appreciate that part. This happened in my first county school committee back in 2001, however it was. I remember strongly, strongly saying that I would never, ever support, we put it in effect, the 1% in the policy, because those prior school committees easily just cut it out every time, never had it, and Thompson went to hell. It was deplorable, and to let your building go to hell like that is a shame on everybody in the school committee. And I said, "That would never, never happen to me. I would never support taking that 1% out of the budget and keeping your property up." And here I am, thinking about it, understanding where we're at, and I just, I understand, and you're going to be talking about it again next year, and all of a sudden, it's going to be next year, and then next year, and then next year, and all of a sudden, the roof's going to start leaking at Rogers, it's going to be interior problems, and it's a shame that you do that. I mean, you have to look at other things besides, you know, upkeeping your buildings. You keep your house up, I hope you keep up the city property, let you, you're leasing from them, basically. So, I will not be supporting it.
Mrs. Gaines.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Gaines, first.
If we don't do this, do you have a suggestion as to where we can capture more money from the budget?
You want, you asking me?
Yes.
Oh, probably don't ask Mrs. Gaines. So, let me give you the history.
No, no, I don't want history. I don't want history.
All right, I'll give you this year.
I want you to look at the current budget and tell us what we can cut tonight. I don't want history, I have not enough history.
All right, well, let me give you more comments, then I'll give you some cuts, too. So, first of all, this committee, everybody can read, I know that, and there's a line item here for $502,000 education funds, which everybody knew that was federal funds expiring. In this year, we have an eighth grade class at Thompson, we could have done it prior years, that had 122 kids. We could have went with one cluster, we chose not to on the vote, and you cost yourself over $500,000 extra this year.
Excuse me, excuse me. That was not my question.
As chairman, I'm going to say, she asked for things that could be cut, not what we might have done.
Do not.
Okay, so, there are some things you can look at, and start looking at the line items again. Let's look at the school committee, and a small one, the school committee travel line item. Let's look at, let's think out of the box. I know Mrs. Bowlen has an idea. She just ran by me today, I mean, she, I don't want to break her idea, but she might want to bring it up later on. There's ideas we can look at, you know?
But now, this is, you know, June the 11th, where are you going to get that kind of money now?
So, Joan, have you looked at the electric contract yet?
It's for next year.
It's up in August.
It's for next year.
For next year, for next year, you're right.
Right, Bobby, all the stuff you're talking about, all the cost savings you're talking about are for next year. And we are looking at that.
Correct, you're right.
If we look at the second column in the budget, what we have budget, no, it's the fourth column. No, that's this year's budget. For next year's budget, let's just look at where, what can we cut?
We're not talking next year.
Do we want to cut, do we want to cut profession?
Let's do this year.
Okay, this year.
We can't cut, I mean, I, again.
What is unexpended that we could take away?
There isn't anything, that's why, back in March, I suggested, if we were going to be in a difficult situation, we would hold off on that. That's why I'm suggesting, right now, that you take the transfer to capital and you move it to the other lines. So, we only have, right now, a deficit of $88,000. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bill?
Decisions we made last year affected this year, and what we make for next year will affect the next year. The point is, we have to look forward, and we never do, and just like the $500,000 that we got from the government, we knew it wasn't going to be there, and then we didn't do anything. And then we could have saved money with the middle school, the last three years, it all builds up to the final, where we are now. If we don't make the cuts that we can, we get caught. We made cuts in the elementary school the last couple of years, but we wouldn't touch the middle school.
I'm just looking for items we've got out of the budget we're into right now, not next year's.
Not seeing any other hands. I'm going to ask for we vote on the motion to move that money into the operating budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, the next thing is, we, go ahead, Neil. If I can just provide a little more guidance on the procedure. You've taken this vote, you've identified what you believe to be the potential or potentially, at this point in time, as best you can say, the actual deficiency. You should authorize the chairman to inform in writing the mayor to that effect. I think you ought to also express, Mr. Chairman, through the superintendent, you've stated the amount, but the statute actually expresses the cause of it, to the extent you're able to identify, so you should express it on the record tonight, if you can. And then, unfortunately, you do need to add in there, in your communication to the mayor and also to the state, a statement of your plan for corrective action. And as I indicated, it can be as simple as, you know, spreading it out over next year's budget, including it ultimately in next year's budget, or two or three. You've done that in the past, but you should come up with something tonight, not that it's a final plan, but it's something that you would consider as an appropriate plan at this stage of the information you have. Include that in communication, and also include that to the state auditor general, so that you can request the approval of the auditor general as well. That way, you'll be in compliance with the statute.
Can I just break this, just to ask superintendent what the cause, what would you say the cause for the deficit?
I would say the cause would have been the tuition line. Is that right, Ms. Tracy?
All right.
That would be the cause, and I would suggest that the remedy would be to add these monies and spread them out over the next two years' budget.
I'll take a motion on that, then, for me to write that letter.
So moved.
Second. Any comments on the letter?
Motion, what's the, what's the?
Write the letter to the mayor.
Just the letter writing, or what, play the cause?
The cause was the special education tuitions.
Okay, so?
And to, and to spread, spread the payment out over the next two years' budget.
So, Joan could, if I could, Joan, up to podium with Neil, I guess, a couple of questions. So, you might need to, Neil, so, in our policy, and Neil can verify, it says, anything, any time we transfer funds over $10,000, it has to come through us to approve it. Am I correct, Neil?
If I'm not mistaken, that particular policy is a certain item, and it relates to a specific item, if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to double check.
Just Gretchen, so it doesn't, any line items that wouldn't count that?
Okay.
So, I was looking up, I guess my question would be, Joe, when did these extra students stop coming in?
Over the course of the entire year.
So, maybe we should have looked at this earlier, I guess that's how I'm trying to say.
Well, maybe if we had proper UCOA coding, we could have looked at it earlier, and if we had a budget that was passed last year in the UCOA format, you could have looked at it last year, but neither of those were the case.
So, okay, I just want to make sure, because a lot of these line items besides adding over $10,000. So, if they're over $10,000, I believe, we'll find out in a minute, that they have to come back to us for transfer of funds.
It is policy, it is policy 3-1-6-0. The approval of the committee shall be required for transfers exceeding $10,002 or from departments, programs, schools, or special accounts. It doesn't specifically say line item to line item, seems inherent in there, but you as a committee just approved the transfer already by your prior vote, so that has taken place.
So, well done, then.
I think on that particular transfer, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, Neil, when I read what your, your take on the whole law, you stated that you thought that, I mean, when I read the law, I thought that it said that any time you are 5,000 off, more than 5,000 off of what you thought you were off, you had to, or whatever that amount is, you had so many days to inform the city council, right? So, my question is, can, is that after, are we allowed to move it all around and then inform them, or do we, do we really have to inform them any time, any specific line item is off?
That's a good question, and here's my take on it. The statute is written such that it's not absolutely clear in that regard. There's certainly an intent, as it relates to year-end finances, that clearly, if you come to know something's going to happen at the end of the year, you want to inform not only the city but the state, so as to deal with the budget shortfall or underrevenues. The one case that dealt with this particular statute involved the city of Cranston, and it dealt with the global issue of kind of the year-end financing, which seems clear that it applies in those instances. Dealing with the scenario of a potential shortfall or over expenditure on a day-to-day operational basis from the beginning of the year throughout the course of the year, doesn't seem logical that you should be dealing with that every time that occurs, and you'd be kind of tying the hands of administration in dealing with everyday nuances to a budget. That could come up so many times throughout the course of a year. And in speaking with the Association of School Committees Executive Director, Tim Duffy, there was legislation, for example, put in this year where such kind of interaction with municipalities or the appropriating side of the city was called for, to clarify, perhaps, maybe the nuances that the statutory language calls for. And you would say to yourself, you would think, and this was his expression, that they wouldn't be seeking that kind of language or clarity to the language if that's what the language already intended. In other words, if that's what it really meant already, they wouldn't be putting in legislation to express that more clearly. So, it seems as if it's dealing with the broader global budgetary issues, and you're now being informed that there's perhaps more than a potential closer to an actual deficiency or shortfall, and so the statute clearly is triggered now, and you should cross those Ts and dot those Is and do the information. If this were in September or December, would you be having to do those kind of things if some piece of information came in, oh, we just got another special education student come in, and it might have a negative impact on that section of the budget? Well, there's other areas of the budget that might overcome that, and you're not really going to be in a deficit situation. So, that's a long-winded explanation of how I'm looking at it at this stage of the game, that clearly, on a global basis, you need to deal with it this way. It's less clear on a day-to-day, early in the season, budgetary issue as to whether you have to go through that.
One more question to that. So, I mean, if we didn't transfer the money tonight, we'd be $452,000 in deficit. Are we required to inform the city of that, that 452,000, but then the action we took that we transferred money over? Will we have to notify them of that, or is that not going to have to be something?
No, I think, obviously, this is a public meeting, they will be aware of it.
Right.
But in terms of the statutory obligations, I don't think so. I think what you've directed your chairman to do is compliant with the statute.
So, it's a motion, then, where do we stand at this point?
The motion to send the letter.
To send the?
Letter with those provisions, okay. All, any further, Wendy, would you just read it?
Want me to read it?
Yeah.
Sure do.
Mrs. Gaines authorizing Newport's? No, I'm moved. I made the motion to authorize. Okay, so I'll say, Mrs. Gaines made a motion to authorize? Yes. The Newport School Committee chairperson to communicate with the Newport City Council and State of Rhode Island Auditor General the cause, special education tuitions and remedy to spread the payment up over the next two-year operating budgets.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might just correct that motion to say, not the Newport City Council, but the mayor, that's what the statute calls for, so it would be the mayor.
Any further discussion on that item?
I just want to clarify that the, to fix this problem, does that mean that funds will be given from city council to us, or we're going to have to create it with the budget?
Yeah.
Seeing no other hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five-two.
Yes.
Can I ask the basic accounting 101 question?
What do you do?
As I look through this current budget, I'm looking at the variance column. If, at the end of the year, some of these positive balance items remain positive, would those numbers then be counted to reduce what we see as a deficit now?
No. Because they sum to the, they sum to the next amount.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we should have been making, we should have been making budget transfers all year.
Maybe that wasn't 101.
We should have been making budget transfers all year long, but when you don't have the budget in the UCOA format, it's very difficult to make the, to recommend transfers.
That was the issue, all year long. We had it set up one way, and the UCOA was the other way.
Where is UCOA now?
I am almost ready to get the journal entry to the city to enter, but I had to stop and do this.
Which was very important, Joan, thank you.
Yes, I know.
Okay, so?
We're almost there.
So, we're finished the action items on this year's budget. Again, it is my hope that when everything closes out, we'll be a dollar in the black, but at least now, we know with a greater amount of certainty where we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to bring to your attention, the NACTEC people who are, who won prizes to go to Kansas City, I believe it is, have sent me a letter just a day ago, asking for money for their transportation. I just don't see it happening out of the current budget. But I do take this opportunity to ask anybody who's listening, whether it be Newport Public Ed, or a volunteer organization like Rotary, or maybe the Boosters Club, that we need $1,400 per person, and I believe there are?
No, they're only asking for $1,400. That's what they're asking for.
Totally.
Yeah, I am, because that's what, that's what she's, she's talking about. She wants, she wants one person, at least that's what she told me.
Anyhow, I'm looking, I'm making a public appeal for that money for these kids to be, to get airfares and hotel rooms in Kansas City. It's too late to put it on the budget, so, I mean, on the agenda. So, item number 7.2, 6.2, 6.2, budget year 2014. Okay, we have a budget that has been established, voted on by the school committee, and submitted to the city council. There was some concern as to where we are with that budget, and so this was on as an action item, should the committee choose to do anything with it.
Discussion.
Action item, yeah. So, if there's not, I mean, we have a budget, it's been submitted, the city council is now going to act on it, so I don't know whether or not anything needs to occur this afternoon, but it was requested that this be put as an action item. So, in an abundance of caution, it's on an action item.
Charlie?
Yes.
Don't we need to suspend our policy and redo this again, because this is the policy for next year, the last vote doesn't count for the next year's budget, and we'd have to suspend the policy and then, and then move the money over? If not, what we did the other day wouldn't have really been kosher.
No, we already made that decision, that it wasn't going to be in the budget, so technically, there was no vote to suspend the motion, to suspend the policy, but there was a vote to acknowledge that there wouldn't be any money for capital in next year's budget. I forget what the vote was, it was four to three, or five to two, something like that, but there was a vote. Question now is? Question now is whether or not that vote was appropriate, without the other vote first. So, so in order to conform your, your, your budget that you've approved with a policy, you would have to vote to suspend, you would have to vote to suspend the 1% policy for next year as well. You're going to sort of have to do that, because that's the budget you've already submitted.
Yeah, and depending on what the council does in the explanation that I gave to the chairman in response to Becky's questions, don't forget, the council will be taking some action, most likely at its next meeting, and if they fully fund you, that would be one thing, if they do not fully fund you, you as a body are going to have to, within 30 days, match up your revenue with your expenditures, and at the very least, even if you didn't do it tonight, you'd have the 30 days within which to tidy that up. So those will be your next actions on the next year's budget.
So we don't have to do anything tonight?
Well, if that was included in the budget that you've already submitted, I would recommend that you ratify that action by, by suspending it, if that's what you did.
That's, that's what, and that's what, you're suggesting that now we memorialize that by suspending the, the, the policy for, for next year's budget, and that's really what you should do, since you've already passed that budget, and, and that budget did not include capital, capital improvements. So that's what you should do.
You should, yes.
My question then, Neil, is do we then re-vote on the budget after we get these other two things, or does the budget stand, would we need another, and could we have another motion to vote on that budget?
I, I think if you vote to suspend the policy and ratify your action that you've already taken on the budget, that that would be sufficient for the record.
It's already been submitted to the city council.
I would move that we suspend the rule next year for 3110, I believe.
I believe that was it.
And ratify our position on the budget as presented to the council.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is the question I asked earlier, and that's why I wanted to bring it up at this point. You know, I voted before to, to take that money out of the budget, but then I brought up the issue of the, of the triplet roof, and I understand, you know, I think the superintendent made a lot of sense saying, you know, we need to put a budget, you know, we can't go in with a deficit, but, you know, we've got a deficit, we've got to, we've got to fix that. I have that. But, you know, next year, we're looking for money from the city, and, you know, whether it's a million-one or a million-two or 900,000, I mean, it is what it is. And I'm not going to vote, because I, believe it or not, Mr. Leary, I'm not going to vote to take the money out of the budget for the capital expenditures, because I was here when a lot of the schools didn't get that, and I know it's going to make a mess for next year, but I'm going to let the chips fall where they may on this one, and I'm going to support not doing that, because I, you know, triplet school roof is there, you know, be what it may, but I, I think that, you know, there's got to be some money in there. Maybe it's a lesser amount, maybe it's, we put $200,000 and we don't do the 1%, I'm certainly willing to suspend the 1%, but I'm not willing to not put some money in the budget for capital expenditures.
So where does the money come from? Because the school committee already approved the budget, so if you, if, if, if you, if you take the capital improvement money and keep it in there, then you're going to have to find that money from personnel or some other area, and I don't, I don't see that we're able to do that at this point in time. Plus, we're going into this situation with almost a 1.5 swing. I mean, Lord knows, I didn't want to do this, but it was the only thing that got us even close, you know? Maybe if things go well next year, and you can pull some money out of something, then you can put money back in the capital improvement account. But everyone voted on this with their eyes wide open, and, and they knew full well what the implications were. Now to, now to change the budget that you've already approved and given to the city council, you know, I would suggest you just wait and see what the city council does with the budget you've given them, and then that's going to have to be revisited at another point in time, Bob. So I would suggest just leave it alone at this point in time and find out what's going on in terms of their support, and, and then we're going to have to drill down in, in a lot of different areas, and then the committee's going to have to make some decisions as to what they want to do. Do they, do they want to have roofs, or do they, or do they want to have people who were involved as deans, or, or people who were involved as, as family service coordinators, or people who were involved in, in, in teaching AP? I mean, these are difficult, difficult decisions.
Just recall them all.
That, that this, that, that, we didn't recall that, 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 these are difficult decisions that this committee has not had to make up until this point in time, and it's, these are decisions that I haven't had to make since 1988. So no one relishes being in this position. But if you make a decision to, 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 to put, to change the budget at this point, now first of all, I don't know if you can, but, but if you make a decision to take the money and put it back in capital, where does that leave everything else? So that's my, that's my only, that's my only issue on this. The school committee already took a vote to do this, everybody knew what it was all about, and, and at this point in time, I don't know why we would change it. Maybe at another point in time, when the city council comes up with, with what they're going to support, maybe that's an appropriate time, but, but I wouldn't, I don't, how, I don't know how you would do it now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've been listening to all of this, and it would seem to me that we've gotten all kinds of, I mean, taken a lot of steps tonight just on this, reducing this deficit. And I think if we leave that next year's budget for the time being the way it is, see what the council does, see what other people even say, even to council members. Perhaps it'll be, maybe there'll be a change of heart, we don't know, I'm not going to be that optimistic.
Mr. Chairman?
But I think we should let things lie the way they are right now, and possibly revisit, if at all, probably have to look again about suspending rules and amending and all that sort of thing. But I think, I myself think we should leave it the way it is right now.
Is that, is that a motion to table until?
Is that a motion?
Until July?
It's a long motion, I don't think I'd want, poor Wendy to have to figure out what I just said.
Motion to table isn't long.
Hmm?
Just motion to table.
Okay, which is not debatable at this point, if you may, is there a second to that, table and motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling it until July?
There's no discussion.
Table and motion?
That's a motion, all in favor of it? Okay. My, my concern is, is, is we, is we have, we have a, a, a budget that seems to be at odds with the policy.
Well, that, that was, that was my motion, to reconcile.
Well, then it should have been to suspend the, suspend the policy. Is that what you meant?
That's what I made, that was my motion.
She made the motion to suspend the policy and to ratify the budget that was submitted.
Right.
That's what the motion is, that was on the table, there's been some discussion about a motion to table.
Mr. Chairman? I just, I just want to be clear that, going forward, that we're presenting a budget to the, to the council that, you know, clearly has got some flaws in it, and, and there's a big flaw when it comes to not putting money in for capital expenditures, that's a big problem. And, and Mr. Leary's absolutely right, it's happened in the past, people got a budget passed, everybody felt good, they went home and walked away from it, but the problem was that the problem, it got worse and worse and worse, until we had a big problem in the city. So to put this vote, you know, I, we'll put the budget forward, but I just want to be on the record that, you know, that this budget has got a huge issue in it, and that has to do with capital expenditures, and we need to fix things, and, and for people to think that this budget's a good budget, they're wrong.
I agree, yeah.
I think we all agree, but it is what it is. I mean, that's... Let me straighten this, listen, we have the original motion, we've had a motion to table, and it's consecutive, voting on the table, voting on the issue of tabling it, all in favor of tabling it? Those against tabling it? Okay, that fails, so we'll go back to the original motion.
I've got one.
Yep.
I know Bobby made mention earlier that creative ideas, I'd rather see us go back to the table, I'm all with Mr. Power here, or Dr. Power, that this budget is not optimal by any means, and I think we should go back to the table before the city council requires us, and, I mean, we need to look and see what other cities are doing around the country, and right now, I mean, I'm going to throw out an idea that we maybe furlough, and I, just as if they're doing it all in Newark, they're doing it in the military, they're doing it everywhere, and they're doing, California did it, they furloughed, and you'd furlough across the board, all teachers, administrators, and you could maybe use, you could use professional Development Day, or you could use a teacher, parent-teacher conference day and go to minimum day, it's just something to think about. It's worth about $111,000 a day we pay in staff, and we might be able to save a couple hundred thousand dollars there, just a very interesting idea that we need to look at.
Yeah, we have a collective bargaining agreement, I doubt that that would ever happen.
Well, you know what, teachers would like to work with and, and see things happen too, so I would not put it past them that, you know, let's not count it out before we even discuss it, that's all.
So the original motion is to suspend the rules and move that money. Any further discussion on that original motion? Then all in favor of suspending the rule and transferring the money? Isn't that your motion?
That was my motion, and that'll be...
It was to suspend the rule and to ratify the budget that was already adopted.
I'm thinking of voting against my own motion.
That's what the motion was.
Can you vote against your own motion?
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Now where do we go? I have no clue.
Yeah, that should have been two.
We, 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 we have...
If I may.
I was opposed.
Opposed?
Who is in favor?
What are we voting on this?
Okay, we submitted a budget to the council that is flawed, and I think as, as long as the council has that budget, that's what they're looking at, but that does not prevent us from sitting down, taking that budget apart, and coming up with something other than violating our own policy. And I think we ought to have a special meeting next week and just bring our brass knuckles and do it.
I agree. But I'm going to make a point, though, in the meantime, the fact, we're being charged with maybe that we've done some activity that's not appropriate by, by the city council.
Right.
So I think that, Mrs., if you had taken your, your motion and maybe divided it into two motions, one would have been to suspend the policy, it might have legal, or might have made us appropriate. Would that be true, Mr. Gallo? Like, if we had just said motion to suspend the policy, would that have made it so that what, what we did last week, because when we sent that budget to them and didn't, and didn't do the policy, we got a problem.
Yeah, you, you needed to suspend the policy and to ratify the budget you voted on.
But we can't, if we split that up, would that help us?
You can do it separately or together, either way, but the intent is to memorialize the budget that you've submitted to them that they are now reflecting on.
But what we're saying is we might not want to memorialize that budget. We might want to look at it and take something out that we, we can live with and keep our capital improvement.
You always have those opportunities available to you as a school committee.
So I think we ought to sit down and tear it up.
You're, you're going to have to do that, if they do not fund the budget that you've presented to them, you're going to have to, in 30 days...
Anyhow.
Adopt another budget.
Yeah.
So you're going to be faced with that, subject to whatever they do. If they fully fund you, then you're okay. If they don't fully fund you, then you're obligated by law to revisit it and adopt a new budget, at which you're going to be, I suspect, floating many different ideas, and you're going to have a lot of debate and discussion as to how you deal with it.
Yeah, I think, I think at that point in time, obviously, I don't think anybody expects the, the city council to fund the school department budget as we presented it to them. Let's, let's be, let's be...
It's still a figure cent tax base.
Let's...
Alone.
Bob, that's what I just said, okay?
It's alone, we're not even in the city.
I, I, I said that, so, I don't want to...
I think we ought to start next week, I don't think we need to wait until the, the council says we're not going to fund, we know what's going to happen, we don't like what we did, so let's undo it.
You will be outside of your timeframes under the statute as far as presenting the budget. They will not be, they're acting on a budget you've presented, so they won't have, if you're anticipating doing that in advance of their meeting...
Yeah, please...
They won't have the...
This is not...
Budget.
My, my concern is, is that we already presented a budget to them, okay? I, I don't know how many times I need to say that. If the school committee didn't like the budget at that point in time, perhaps it shouldn't have been presented. It was presented. All, all that we were doing today, because somebody brought it up, was to take a look at suspending the rules because we did not put the capital improvement line item in the budget. So I would suggest again, why not wait until such time as the city council takes action on that before we do anything else? They have a budget that we've given them already.
But we have an illegal standing as far as what we did with that budget.
I don't know whether or not it was illegal, but...
It was, it was at least unethical, because we did not follow our policy.
Mr. Chairman? I thought that, why, why can we not have a vote to suspend the policy? If that passes, then the budget that we sent to the city council is the budget we sent to the city council, and then we'll deal with the next steps of, you know, how we put that budget together.
That would be sufficient. All right. Bob, you want to make that motion?
I make a motion that we suspend the, no, I don't want to make that motion, because I really, I really don't agree with that, I mean, I may end up voting for it, but I'm not going to be the one that makes that motion.
I'm really confused on what...
You, you are, you're mad.
Nothing was tabled.
Why?
I mean, somebody's going to defeat it.
It failed.
Right, but what was that motion? What, I, I never got it.
Okay, so, so, there was supposed to be a motion on the floor to suspend the policy to conform with the submitted budget from, from the school committee, I, I think...
I'd say...
The motion was...
I have it right here, Mrs. Gaines made the motion to suspend policy number 3110, and ratify this year 2013-2014 budget as already adopted as was presented to the Newport City Council.
That's what the motion was. And, and, and Dr. Power said just put the first part on.
Correct, that's going to be a new motion, but he hasn't made it, somebody else is going to make it.
We voted that one down, the initial one, Mrs. Gaines, so now we need a new motion.
I'll make it. Okay. I, I'd like, just in order to move this on here, I'm going to make the motion, and I'm not going to vote for it, but the motion is to suspend policy number one?
3110.
3110, in order, and that's it.
For, for that year's budget.
For the budget year 2013-14.
And then at another point in time afterwards...
You don't have to say anything else.
Right. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Any further discussion on waiving the policy? All in favor of waiving the policy?
Hi.
Four.
Against, against.
So, so now we have the budget that we submitted to the city council, and it's been confirmed. However, again, there's a process, yeah, there's, there's, there's a process now, and Neil, do you, I just want to confirm what the process is?
Yeah, this will come back, this will go before the council, as the budget is already there, they'll discuss it at the meeting at which they're going to take up the appropriation. If they do not accept your budget and underfund and appropriate less, you will then have 30 days within which to adopt a balanced budget. And as I've indicated to the chairman, there are then other steps you can take that you've taken in the past relative to asking for waivers from the state to see if the state would recognize and allow you to take steps that will cost you less money, they've not been too liberal with granting those waivers, but you're obligated to ask for those, and you are then also entitled to ask, again, for another meeting with the council, to convince them for the budget that you've, that you're requesting, and then finally, ultimately, if you, as a body, decide you have the ability under the statute to follow the corollary process. So there are many steps you need to... the statute to follow the carolo process, so there are many steps you need to take, but that first one, within 30 days of whatever their action is, the council, you'll be getting together and debating and deciding how you're gonna deal with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Can I, Mr. Galvin, would those cuts, if we had to make them, be real cuts or fake cuts? Well, the point being is, as I understand it, we just make cuts and, okay, we balance our budget. Doesn't mean that they're real cuts, it's just that, well, we're gonna do that, not in reality.
Yeah.
And so, that's where I have a problem, waiting till the end, because by August, there is nothing to cut, because everything's in submit.
I, I suggest, or submit, that you're going to go through a process and have very earnest debate and discussion as to what you can or can't do. You've already had it in your budget process already, and you've come up with what you think you can live with, cutting it to the bone. You're gonna go through that again, and you're gonna review it in earnest again, and you're gonna hear from a lot of sides of discussion. You may take some other steps you weren't willing to take before, that are legitimate and real, and actually reduce expenditure, or maybe you come up with other sources of revenue. In the end, if you can't come up with those balancing numbers, there is a process that is required by statute to adopt a balanced budget, that judges have commented on, as indicating it seems somewhat ludicrous to put you in a position to adopt a budget simply to say it's balanced. But, I wouldn't say that it's fake in this sense, that you're gonna go through a legitimate discussion process. You still may find, through some discussion process, areas to do, but in the end, if you can't, you still have to adopt a balanced budget, and that's kind of the context in which you've asked your question.
So, just, just quickly, Dr. Boj, I know, I know we're gonna have to go back and revisit this. What are we asking the council for, just so the public hears it again?
Don't have that.
No, that's fine. 1.4 million, something like that.
1.4, 1.4 and change.
Okay, 1.4 million, so, we're gonna go back when they can't allocate that money. Tonight, we just, you just recall, like, for example, I'm not saying I'm a fan of it, but, for example, you just said that we wanted to eliminate the deans, you can't now, because you just recalled all the secondary teachers. So, how are you gonna do that? I'm not saying you're in favor, but you just recall them all, so you just limit your options.
There are other options for the day.
That, that, that could still happen, I'm not recommending it.
Yeah, I know.
No, that could still happen, even with the recalls, that could still happen, but I'm not recommending it, because the people who hold the positions have other certifications. But, but again, I'm not recommending it.
No, I just, for example, could you...
No, and, and, I mean, keep in mind, our mission statement of why we're here, that if we truly mean that we're going to provide the education, we understand that this is a people-oriented profession, and whatever we, whatever we can pull out, keep in mind, we already, if we already said to the council, "This is a bare-bones budget," what, do we take away the bones now?
Yeah.
What's left?
That's right.
That's it.
1.4 million dollars.
And we gotta find...
Ms. Bowlin?
But I would, Mrs. Gaines, what she, she just mentioned about, I'd like to meet as soon as next week to start rehashing this, because we know it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, and I don't wanna wait until July.
No.
People are gonna be on vacations, I'd just say we get right to it and start working on it. It looks like we're proactive, and, and I think that if we all sat at the table, we might be able to, you know, to come up with something. So, I'm, I'm in favor of, 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 you know, of having a meeting next week.
I'm not, I'm only two times, my second time, so, I'm not sure it's bare-bones budget. Is it my third time? I'm sure it's gonna be quite a thing. If I can speak more than twice, Neil. So, I'm not sure it's bare-bones budget yet, when we have $15,000, I know this is small peanuts, but we have $15,000 in there for the school committee and the superintendent to travel conferences, maybe we should cut that.
Maybe we should.
Superintendent, superintendent, it wouldn't be me, and I didn't go on conferences this year, Mr. Leary, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that.
No, 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 I'm just saying it's not bare-bones yet. It's not, that's my point, it's not bare-bones yet.
And some of us paid for our travel fees.
Yeah. All I'm saying is not bare-bones yet. Well, we'll look into a meeting, but I'd like to move the agenda to go to 7.2.
No, we have 6.3. The audit that has been requested.
6.3 budget audit.
Although, I asked that this be put on, because certain council people felt that we needed an audit, and it turns out, unknowingly, that there's an audit underway, and I just wanna welcome that audit, and if the, and I don't think the city has the money to do it, but if they want it, do it, and more, another, more deeper audit, that we welcome that one too, and that's only the purpose of that motion.
I would move the motion.
Neil...
Just a brief comment.
Yeah, and Joan Tracy's here as, as well to talk about that.
Just in terms of logistics, Mr. Chairman, and you may not be thinking of it in these terms, but should you, as a committee, decide to go down a path, because the differences are so great between you and the city council of the carolo process, one element of that carolo process is a requirement to have a program audit done. So, if what you're suggesting is different than that, I'm not sure if you're thinking of it in those terms, and if it's a duplication of that, or if it's in anticipation of that, so, you may want to hold off considering doing something until and unless you cross that bridge, because a program audit is required by the statute, and it's at the school committee's expense, but it's engaged by the city council, so I just wanted to remind you of that, that process. Well, Berkshire, they, the last time you went through this process, they engaged Berkshire, you ended up resolving the matter, but you also engaged your own consultants to assist you in the process, so, I just wanted to point these out for your consideration.
The intention was not to do anything for carolo, but rather, one of the councilors said she's not gonna make any approval of any school budget, as long as we don't have an audit done, and I think we just, in view of the fact that an audit is underway, let the public know that we welcome it.
Oh, sure.
And if they want to extend that audit and pay for it, we welcome that one too.
Sure.
It's nothing to do with... If, if Joan can come up, just briefly, I know you love this, Joan, I'm sorry, and, and, and talk about the audit, because every year, the city auditors come in and spend a lot of time, and Joan used to be one of them, so...
Yes.
Could you talk about the audit, Joan, and how extensive it is, and what they do?
The audit of the entire city of Newport, which includes the Newport Public School Department, and all its books and records, are subject to an annual audit every year, that has to be accepted by the auditor general.
So, it's done?
Yes, and the city engages the auditors, the planning process for this, for this audit is already done. I personally have never heard of anybody doing a budget audit, I mean, unless you want some kind of performance audit on how the budget was prepared.
It's performance audit that they're talking about.
Meaning, could you explain that to those of us who are...
That the monies that are being spent are being spent as, as appropriately as possible, okay? And what this, what Charlie's resolution is, or motion, is that we welcome it, we're not afraid of an audit. If they want to audit and pay for it, go for it.
Oh, okay, that's...
And if, if we need such an audit, if we go carolo way, then the audit has already been done, and the city will have paid for it, not us, so we can't lose.
See, this is what I wanted to clarify, because it says here that we support, so maybe, maybe I'm reading too many meanings into this, you know, but support means, yeah, okay, go along with it.
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
And that, it says, willing to support any other one that the city of Newport wishes to finance and conduct. We're not gonna get hit with a bill.
No.
Because we can't afford it anyway. Okay, fine.
Need a committee.
I'm gonna ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, help me out, Mrs. Gaines.
I move the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, repeat the motion, please.
What's the motion?
It's in...
It's written.
6.2.
We should say after the...
6.3. You gotta put performance in, the performance, Neil.
The Newport School Committee supports the city of Newport's annual audit that is conducted this year by Comen Resnick LLP, and is currently underway, and is willing to support any other financial or performance audit that the city of Newport wishes to finance and conduct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we jumped down to 7. 7.1, school budget update. I think we've beaten that up, let's move on. Shared services with Middletown. I have an update on this, I met with Rosemary Cragger, superintendent of Middletown Public Schools regarding the issue of shared services, she suggested that two school committee people meet, I think she had talked about the chair and the vice chair from Middletown and Newport, with respective superintendents, to discuss what possible shared services would be appropriate. And that's what you asked me to do, that's what I did, and that's the response.
So, when's it gonna happen?
Well, that, it happens when the school committee determines who they're gonna send as the two representatives.
So, who's going?
That's not my call, that's the school committee's call.
Mr. Chair? Who's going?
Said chair and vice chair, said, said chair and vice chair.
Well, she made a recommendation, did she, did she make that?
We talked about, yeah, we thought it was appropriate that the chair and vice chair, so...
If someone wants to go in my place, Bob, would you like to go?
Be happy to go.
I'd be happy, oh, okay. And then I would recommend Bobby, uh, Dr. Power.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a concept here, because if I wanna set something up, I need to, to, to make sure that I know who, who, who to, who to invite to the, to the dance, so to speak. Okay, okay, then I will call up Rosemary Cragger, and we'll see if we can set something up. Item number 7. Bob?
Yeah, I have a, you know, I, I think, this is a slap in the face to the city council of Newport.
No, it's not.
They've been trying to share services, they asked you to do the business, the maintenance, this and that, and we've cut them, no, 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 and now we're saying, well, let's talk to Middletown about some shared services. I think, personally, personally, I think it's a slap in the face to the city council of Newport.
Point of order, Mr. Leary. The reason I deferred to Dr. Power is that I'm working with shared services, meeting weekly with the city manager and Dr. Shoemaker, we are talking about shared services, we are planning shared services, and when there is a plan in place, it will be presented to the city, to the school committee.
Yes, Ms. Chan, Bowlin?
At the annual meeting of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, I think those of us who were there, we're speaking with one of the, well, happened to be one of the people from the Middletown School Committee, and we're saying, I mean, we're all excited about this whole idea that there are areas that, if you start small, and you have some particular areas that might not even cost much of anything, but could say, could be much more efficient. So, this is, this is a different angle from sharing particular services with the city, so, a lot of good things come up from those meetings, too.
I mean, we, we can share things with Middletown that we can't share with the city.
Yeah.
Like virtual classes, the city does a new virtual classes.
So, you're talking a horse of a different color.
Okay, health school projected enrollment numbers? The, the only thing that I did hear, this, this reprised a previous staffing, I gave an update on, on kindergarten registration. Again, this is a fluid issue, I think my memo said, "We'll know better at the end of the year when we have the transfers out," but...
Yes?
I, I just wanna make it clear, when you look at the minimum-maximum staffing, and the projection is 36 classrooms at the very least, it does not include the two preschools, so, you add the 30, so that is the 38 is the very minimum we're gonna need, we only have 39, and the projection is up to 39, plus the two would be 41, so, it's very likely that we are not gonna have room at the, so that every class is inside a classroom the way it's planned, so I just wanna make sure that that goes on the record.
Superintendent, search process, it's been pretty quiet during the last couple weeks. I think you each got a profile that Dr. Devenus, that was put together from the focus groups. Did everybody get it?
Yep.
Okay, and he's putting, and he's receiving the applications, and the next step is going to be in July, when we get going with the committee, uh, community, community committee, so, I'll take any questions, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chair, I would like to start talking contract, and get a lot of contracts from different superintendents, and let's start reviewing them, get prepared before we have, it's Tucker one already there, you know?
Well, he's very tuned in on that, and he's going to get the contracts next time he addresses us, I think.
Okay, so, have a meeting, strictly talk contracts, I love the...
I was, I was supposed to be gathering contracts, I don't know how this, this new law about all contracts being online, the only one I could find online was ours. I have not had good luck getting superintendents to share their contracts. Tim Ryan is going to see what he can do, if he can talk to a few people who might be willing to share it.
You can make an open public records...
I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna...
Okay, but I'm just saying, there's no legal requirement that it be put online, there is a legal requirement that if someone asks for it, it be divulged.
So, shouldn't we have that, maybe we should make a motion to, to ask someone?
What?
To, uh, put an open public records, get a copy of those contracts, I wanna, I wanna see six, seven, 10 of them, look at them, see what they have in them. Mr. Galvin, what's your thoughts?
I don't know if we need a motion to do that, I don't know.
Discussion, it's not, it's not on the motion.
Yeah, he's, Devenus is looking at that, yeah.
Yeah, why not?
Write a letter to six districts, they ask for it.
That's a separate committee.
Mr. Galvin, if, if Mr. Leary wrote a letter to six or seven districts to ask for that, they'd have to send it to him, right?
Yeah.
There you go, they have to send it to you.
Yes, go to where, send it...
No, he's not involved in that.
I'm not, I'm not touching this one with a 10-foot pole.
Bob, I'm saying, if you send a letter...
Mazel tov to the next person, but I'm not, I'm not involved.
I definitely, Bob, if the guy, when you meet him next time, I'll ask him to send a letter out to every district.
Somebody else is gonna have to do that, Mr. Leary.
We'll work on it.
Okay. Sorry, Bob. It's just, can't do it. 7.5, Public Relations slash Community Outreach Subcommittee, Dr. Flowers, you headed that.
Yeah, we had two meetings already, the Mrs. Bowlin, Mrs. Gaines, Dr. Booth, Dr. Nasbo, and Lynn Segley, apparent, who was here earlier, representing the community, we met on May 20th and May 28th, we looked at certain pertinent areas of the strategic plan that really addressed the need to, for us to focus our community outreach efforts, and also looking at public relations. Some things have been done already, such as getting information out to parents, and as the strategic plan says, user-friendly manner, the listservs, they use email, copies of various information go in to the, with the youngsters in their backpacks, especially to the younger children, information's posted at schools, and we're trying to get the community to be more engaged in what's going on in the public schools, and really just spreading the word about what's going on. Quite a bit has been done in the media, but we want, we just keep trying to fine-tune. We're looking at keeping the website as good, if not better than it is already, Marson's been very helpful with this, of getting information out to just various locations around the community, and the library, various church groups, there are other community groups through the city of Newport links itself, the university, and so forth. We're trying to really build on developing an effective district communication system. The strategic plan, I called for redesigning the website, and it certainly was, and of course, there's always a continual updating. Interestingly, one of the strategic plans was to develop an annual public relations campaign, identifying various themes, which I'm looking forward to getting this going. There were certain suggestions that were brought up, and, and again, these are all in the talking stages right now. First of all, a district calendar, to make sure that there are not as many conflicts that have... that have been happening with various events. There is a brochure that has been available when people come in, that update that brochure, distribute it in key places, such as pediatrician's offices, over at Naval Station Newport, preschools, library, realtors, so many places. A better use of media to disseminate information of, Dr. Ambrosi had shared with us the, and we see it all the time anyway, the template, the form this used to get the news out to the Daily News and Newport This Week, and of course, carrying it further to with Patch.com, Newport Now, when various events occur in the schools that we want to let folks know. In the planning stages, our periodic presentations on radio station W E D K. I have already spoken to one of the editors of the Daily News, would love to see a column that maybe the systems throughout Newport County could be putting in. People have suggested the newsletters that go out to the parents in the schools, and now having just the three schools, that's going to really simplify things. An important point in getting information out to the public is to have one person who will be that conduit for information. Understanding, the superintendent always gives the final informator before things go out, but there could be a designated each school to, to gather that information. We do have a year in review document that was put out a couple of years ago. That has to be updated and shared. Opportunities for citizen participation have to be publicized. And this is interesting, that there was a suggestion for, Mrs. Segley put this out, she's on the three hundred and seventy-fifth Newport Anniversary Committee, and getting students involved in the projects. Well, one of the teachers happened to be present at this particular subcommittee meeting, and he's, oh, I'll start making some contacts. Some of the history teachers are really excited about it, and they wanted to get involved with the History Day, focusing on some of Newport history. So that's just the beginnings of all our brainstorming, and that's, that reflects. We're meeting again on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, and of course, those are always open meetings. Any ideas you have, send them this way.
How many community members are on your committee?
Uh, right now, one. And curiously, I had, I was puttering around this morning, a former Underwood School student, was a Facebook friend, sent me a message and said, gee, shouldn't the new Pell School have a Facebook page? And so I replied, I said, funny thing, you mentioned this, and I said, I'm preparing this report, and it's something that, and again, we're very careful of the social media. Police Department has a Facebook page, the Fire Department has a Facebook page, and they upload all of this information. Doesn't have to be a ton of things every day or every week, but these are things that can happen. So I said, I, I said my message to her, I said, we can always use community members, hint, hint, and she said, sign me on, because that's what she's trained in, is communications. And she's a downtown girl, too, so that's one of our people.
Item seven point six, Pell Building Committee, Mrs. Gaines?
Well, we're drying out. I'm sure, as you heard from Mrs. Jackson, she had some flooding over the weekend, well, I had flooding too, but, and I'm nowhere near Pell. Most of Newport was flooded. But we have always said, and our engineers and our architects have always held that, once the building is complete, that our neighbors will be better off than they were before the building was there. There has been a problem of water on Dudley Avenue and Dexter Street since time began. And not all flooding is the result of the building. We have informed, I don't, and, well... When a person has an incident on their property, they usually inform their insurance carrier, and there is an investigation, and it is determined where the responsibility is. That process has not taken place. What we will do is ensure that any damage as a result of the Pell Building will be taken care of. What I will not encourage or ask the city or the school district to do is make improvements to anyone's property. I don't think that's, that's our mission. We cannot install drains around the perimeter of, of Butters. That would be an enhancement, and we can't do that. We will take care of any damage that is caused by the construction, and is determined by our engineers to be our responsibility.
One more thing, you received an update on the finances of the Pell School?
Oh, yes, I did. You, you, I don't have it in front of me.
And, and the, the update has indicated that we have three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars remaining in the contingency account after everything known now is accounted for. I do wanna point out that we still are hopeful that there will be some fundraising, so, so the youngsters may have laptops. Again, that's something that we had hoped we would have available for the Pell School right now, because we're close to, to the, to the end game in terms of the finances. It would be helpful if we could have that fundraising occur, so we could spend money for, I think we talked about second, third, and fourth graders having laptops, and, and I know we're trying to get some grants to have kindergarteners, first graders having iPads, so that's where we are on that.
Okay. Move along to student absenteeism rate.
Yes, Mr. Leary asked that this be on the agenda as a result of a Channel Twelve News report, which listed Rogers High School as the thirteenth highest in the state for chronic absenteeism. As the school committee will remember, not this year, I believe, but the year before, we made that a top priority. We had a summit, we did all sorts of different things. We changed our procedures, we changed our practices, we, we focused on trying to, to work with child and family. It is a very, 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 very difficult problem that is not, not unique to, to Newport. It's, it's unique to, to, to high schools that have a substantial group of youngsters coming from poverty. That being said, we always hope that we can do better, and that's why we took those initiatives, actually before the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year, and that was the year that was reported out. I do have Jim Nelson here to talk a bit about that, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Kimby Townsend to, to talk about some of the things that we've been doing at the, at the elementary level, that, that, you know, we're, we're, we're taking a look at in terms of implementing next year. So, Jim, do you wanna, if you have something you wanna pass out, that's great.
First things, to kind of identify where the problems lie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, what I did, I, I only had a couple days to look at this, and so this is a really bit of a rough thing, but what we did is we sat down, I mean, we know why our kids are absent, and we kind of broke it into groups. The, the first thing, you know, we looked at are the medical health issues, and that's about eleven percent of the total population. That, along with the War College, which if you notice, it's only four kids that are represented in this group, but that probably is more like eight kids, because a lot of the War College kids have gone. So that, that's, if you look at those numbers, that's close to, where's the medical health, eleven, twelve, it'd be about fifteen, sixteen percent, that, you know, you really don't have control over.
Now, why wouldn't they be disenrolled if they left?
The War, well, the War College, they, they are, but the reason they are, the reason they have their truant is because they do these cultural excursions. So they're going out, you know, they, that's kind of built into what they're doing here. They're, they go to New York, they go to Washington, so that's why they have a high rate of absenteeism. The, the other thing you have to look at that we're facing is the, you know, now we have to keep kids till they're eighteen years old. And we identified about ten kids, or five percent, and these are kids who are at like sixteen, seventeen years old, who have two or three credits, who generally we would try to look at options like Job Corps, but Job Corps was no longer an option this year because sequestration. The GED program is not an option till they're seventeen. So, you know, those are, those are students that we can't withdraw, and they, that reflects poorly on our attendance. Cultural, if you look at the cultural, what, what we've noticed, five years ago, when I first came here, our ESL program was mainly servicing War College kids. If you look at our ESL program now, it's mainly servicing Latin American kids. We've registered about five kids in the past three months from Latin America. This is a population that we're not, you know, we have not dealt with in the past, and there are cultural issues there. You know, the kids are working, they're, they're doing babysitting, you know, there are cultural reasons for them to be absent. The ones that we can really focus on and control are the ones that with the socio-emotional and the family dysfunction. Now, the socio-emotional are the kids, there are forty-one there, and those are kids that are, that are getting services on a regular basis via counselors or social services within the school. I mean, these are kids who have, you know, very severe kind of emotional, social problems. And as I kind of looked at those, those are, those are kids who, whose absentee, absenteeisms are more like in the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. They don't have these huge, because we, I think we do a good job servicing them, but they do have kind of other counseling needs. The family dysfunction, that, that's the largest group. That's, that's the nut that needs to be cracked. That's with the families, you know, dealing with the parents, doing those home visits, you know, trying to outreach to those kids. And that, that's what we've tried to do this year, what we did, you know, we had a open house this year, we had a, we had a phone bank where we called every single parent in the district, we offered transportation, we got very little response. I mean, you know, we've done things to try to reach out to parents. Of the list of kids that we looked at that are truant, I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent of these kids have been contacted by counselors, by the dean, by, you know, they've, we've had, you know, contact with the parents with the kids, one-on-one with them. Yes?
Jim, you mentioned home visits. How, how much of your contact is home visits, and who doesn't?
Well, you know, that, that's, one of the issues is, you know, that would be, you know, Mr. Merritt who would do that primarily. Part of the problem with truancy court and Eddie at, I mean, I think more of his focus, as it should be, is at the elementary, middle school, because truancy court doesn't even look at kids who are sixteen, seventeen years old. They, they won't even take them in, because at that point, they...
They say, why bother?
Right. So, you know, we're only, you know, truancy court, we're only dealing with kids who have been coming up from the middle school and have a history of truancy court, or the younger kids. So, yes?
So, it just is unacceptable, man. Totally unacceptable. We have two hundred and twenty-five kids that are absent more than eighteen times.
Yes.
It's, it's totally unacceptable. It's a priority, and it's just not, just not working out. It's, you know, I've, I've worked in public education over for that, and I'm not having any answers. I've also worked for forty years in private industry. There's always an excuse in education, it's always an excuse. In private industry, boy, they say, you get this done, and it, it's done differently. And I think that's one of the biggest problems here. We commonly make excuses, well, it's the buses, too. What the bus doing, let's start later, let's start school later.
I'm not giving excuses, I'm just looking, we're identifying the problems, and this is how, we have, have we, have we, you know, we did some things this year. We did call all the parents, we tried to get them all, we called, we had a phone bank, we called every single parent, offered transportation to come to the parent-teacher conference, and we got about three takers. I mean, yes.
We got three takers, and we also had twenty-four percent of all the phone numbers that didn't work that night.
Right, I mean, you know, so...
Let's start later.
And even in terms of phone numbers, we have, we have, you know, we make phone calls every day for kids who are absent, we have, you know, we're finding the phone numbers that are, you know, we're not calling the home phone, we're calling the cell phones, but that's, that's another transition that we're making.
Okay, so two things that are kind of, well, I'd ask for, so you can see how many have missed eighteen days, but could you maybe go back and refine this, maybe after graduation? I know how busy you are. But to put, how many days this looks like? So, so is there, how many kids fall between the missing eighteen to twenty-five range? How many kids fall between the twenty-five days, you know, so...
Right, and that, that's something that absolutely would be the thing is, is, you know, like anything else, you look at the kids who have the eighteen to thirty days, and those are the ones you wanna really focus on first, because there, you're gonna have your biggest impact.
Okay, and then my second question was, I don't see where AOP is broken out. I know that we've gotten that before, but you don't have the number of what that absenteeism looks like? How many of those kids missed more than eighteen days?
No, I mean, I didn't, I, I included those within this general, I could have included it.
That one we could break out later, too.
Yeah, that's...
So those are the two things I'll ask for next time we discuss.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can definitely do more, give them more time, but the clerks are all like, graduation honors night, you know, so...
Two questions. One, may we assume, and we shouldn't assume things, that some of these kids are like in the same families?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's probably, that would be...
I mean, they're, they're families with five or six kids connected.
And when you're talking about chronic, I mean, if you're talking the whole year, and you're talking eighteen days, two days the first term, three, that doesn't, that doesn't seem to me as though it would be chronic.
One eighth of the school year is gone.
No, we have kids with eighty, seventy-three, fifty-two. I mean, we have kids who are just, yeah.
I mean, those who, someone might, they might be ill, obviously you're taking that into consideration.
Right.
Because there's some areas that we have to know.
What will, what will be most interesting is to find out whether or not these percentage and numbers change this year as a result of some of the things that were ultimately implemented.
Right.
That was my next question. What, what steps have you implemented? Has there been any kind of incentive to these kids to come to school? Have you talked about maybe a rotating schedule where maybe some of them need to come later?
You know, if you read in the report, I mean, no, but, you know, part of the difficulty is it's a six-thirty, you know, start time for a lot of these kids. And then when they miss the bus, when they miss the bus, there are, you know, not a lot of kids live close to Rogers, so they, they don't have other means of transportation, so we lose them for the day.
And we, we had that, well, let's, let's revisit this. We did have that bus, we, I worked really hard to work with Ripta to get a later bus, and nobody took it. So quite honestly, I don't view that as, as an excuse. We had a late bus, we ran it from the north end to Rogers, everybody knew about it, we publicized, publicized, publicized it. So I don't think that that can be the reason, because nobody took the bus.
The big chunk is that...
I mean, we, we sometimes forget the things that we did, that didn't, that didn't have any results, and that was one of those things that...
Right, I mean...
That we worked really hard to get as a result of the, of the summit.
Have you, have you thought about any kind of incentives that would be appropriate? I don't mean money, but, what can you do, what can you do if a kid is disconnected from school? What can you do to reconnect them?
Well, that's where you get the adult that makes, you know, you get that person that makes them wanna come. You know, sports is a big motivator for kids. You know, you find that, that other teacher or that, that activity that appeals to them, and you make those connections. That's why I think, you know, when I looked at the socio-emotional, a lot of those kids, you know, their truancy is, we have a lot of kids who aren't on this list who have much higher socio-emotional needs, but they're there because they get the social services at the school. You know, we've done, you know, I was talking with, we did nine safety evaluations the other week, and, you know, of those, a lot of those kids aren't on this... other week, and, you know, of those, a lot of those kids aren't on this list because they are getting serviced in the school, so, you know, they're, what are, yeah, I mean, it is making those connections, it's as simple as that. And it's getting, it's, it's educating the parents. I mean, parents are a big part of the problem. You know, they, they, you know, we've struggled, I've struggled, you know, I've said, "Parents have to come in to sign kids out, I'm not just going to sign," and that's been a big, it's a cultural thing. You know, it's getting people to accept these different ways of doing things.
It's irresponsible.
Right.
And the problem started long before these kids entered Rogers High School.
Right. It's like, you know, parents calling kids out and saying, you know, "This is an excused absent, he overslept," and we're trying to explain, "That's not an excused absent. That, that means he's, you know, that's, or unexcused tardy." You know, "That's not an excuse for being late, but you overslept."
I'm, I'm not saying you should threaten anybody, but...
But go ahead.
It wouldn't hurt if parents knew that there is a law and they can be fined $50 a day. I think it's...
That's something we, yeah.
They need to know that and maybe be informed that it is the policy of the district to inform the authorities when students are absent.
Right. We have told parents that, and that, that's part of the truancy, that's where the truancy, the teeth, you know, we're kind of a paper tiger here because we can say things, but, you know, what, what can we actually do? You know, force a kid to come on Saturday? What can we actually force kids to do? The truancy court has some teeth to it, but as a school, we, we can threaten, but I hate to threaten if I can't follow through.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just like a parent on a kid, right?
But I make no excuses. It's something we need to, we need to do a better job at. I don't, I don't disagree. Absolutely.
Make some recommendations, and maybe your start school is 8 o'clock. Let's try something different.
That's, absolutely, but that, that's, that becomes, that becomes a sport, that becomes a busting.
It's a huge issue with everything else.
Yeah, no, but you think about this, here we are, we're sitting here next year, I say, "Oh, jeez, we've got 41% of kids absent now. We have the highest price high school in the state, and we've got kids absent 41% of 225 kids absent more than 18 times a year."
Right.
It's crazy. It's, it's, I give up.
Charlie?
No, no, don't give up. We have to...
You?
Yeah, I wanted to just, you know, I passed out the Casey report on absenteeism, and this goes back, as Dr. Ambrosi says, it goes back probably pre-K. These kids getting into kindergarten, getting to third grade, they're not reading, and the statistics are pretty convincing, not only from the Casey, but you're not proficient in reading by the end of third grade. You're probably going to drop out, and absenteeism goes parallel with that. We are making a lot of progress there. It's slow, but it's going to take a long time before you see the effect, but I think that's where we've got to address, that's what all the experts are saying right now. Your point about juvenile courts aren't working, they're not, they understand the problem, and they know that they're ineffective, and that's why they're sort of shunning the 16-year-olds.
Well, this was a top priority, and we got no results, period.
Well, I know, but it's going to have to take, it's going to take 10 years before these kids are pre-K, get up through the system.
Again, I'd like to see this year's numbers and see whether or not there was anything that was done this year. Last year was when we began the, the implementation. I don't know how effective it was or whether or not it, it was full-blown, but, but I've got Dr. B in here, who's going to be talking about the future situation. Our belief, and I, I just want to point out again, when we had that summit, we always believed that to make the difference, you need to start pre-K 1, kindergarten 1, 2, 3, with the attitude that kids develop, that school is important. With the attitude that parents develop, that school is important. If you don't develop that attitude in the early grades, and kids don't do well in the early grades, I don't know what you're going to be able to do at the high school level to, to, to turn this boat around. And if you look at, if you look at the numbers of, of chronic absenteeism, and you look at the schools where the youngsters come from, you, you see a lot of schools with, 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 with kids in, coming from very challenging environments.
Yeah.
Can we, can, just one second. Mr. Schumaker, do you think we can have a report back in, in August sometime, so we can relook at this before school starts? I, you know, and some of that more detailed information? Okay.
You've got to have school in session before you really start getting the numbers, don't you?
No.
You've got to have last year's.
Last year's numbers in August.
This past year's numbers.
Yeah, in August, so we can address anything that you might need.
Yeah. I mean, in terms of what I've broken down.
Right, what you broke down, and then asked what I asked for the...
Yeah, I mean, it needs to be broken down a little further.
A little bit further, broken down, right. And then...
I just thought, given the time, it's like, just, this is a general overview of what's going on.
Maybe this is, I'm, I'm an oddball here, but I'm not so much interested in the numbers and who's, I want to know, what are we going to do about it? What are the plans to correct it?
Doing nothing.
It, it tells me nothing to tell me what percentage of kids from whatever street were absent. We don't have the staff to go to that, that area and, and work with those people.
Well, what, what staff we, what staff we do have, I think we need to focus on the kids that can be moved the most. I mean, that would be my, what I would do.
A plan?
Yes.
That's what I'd like to see.
That's what I'm looking at, is those kids who are 18 to 30, who really aren't, you know, why aren't they there? Because of parents, and really focus on moving those.
Could those kids be candidates for ALP?
Yeah.
I'd like to see a plan to get them engaged.
So, perfect segue, because the two things we've been talking about at the elementary level is, what we're currently doing at the elementary level isn't working, and the second thing is the number of cuts to our staff. How are we going to work efficiently around truancy when we've gone from four family service coordinators to two? So, you know, the big thing that we decided in looking at the different things that we've tried, which is absolutely outreach to families, trying to connect them with agencies, incentives, monthly awards for the students that are, are in enrollment for the, for the month, you know, just a lot of different things that we've been trying, so what can we do differently? So we, a couple of us went to professional development on the walking school bus, really thinking, you know, we're thinking about the truancy issue, and then what we learned through it is that there's probably a lot of side benefits that could come out of this, not even connected to truancy. You know, more families that are concerned about the location of where Pell is, and their children can no longer walk to school, bike-riding routes, you know, exercise, cost savings in busing possibly, if we really get this up and running. But what our plan is right now is to look at our most truant families, create a radius map of about a mile, and see if we can target enough of our families that are truant, because working with the parents is not working. So what our tactic wants to be is to empower the kids. So how can we empower the kids around getting to school every day? And we met with several people that have had this program in LA, Columbus, and Missouri, New York, and we also had a local person from South Providence, who've had a lot of success. They started out very, very small, it takes a lot of coordination to pull this off, but the woman that we spoke to that came from South Providence said that they've turned around 25 students in one little elementary school, chronic, chronic absenteeism, and it was all about empowering the kids. You have to outreach to get the parents on board, to allow them to be part of the walking school bus, but honestly, it's not, that's their commitment, that they allow their child to be on the walking school bus. So, so there's a small group, we're going to stop working on this during the summer. I think someone's already contacted City Hall to get, or maybe even Joan, to get a large map, so we can do a mile radius and look at our, our truant families. But we know, you know, based on where Pell's located, we have families, you know, I mean, we have families right downtown that are not of poverty, and it's an emotional, you know, dynamic within the family, or families, that we, you know, outreach to them, but it's, it's generational with some of these families that are not of poverty. And so we're, we're trying to think, what we're going to do with those outlier families that aren't part of that one mile radius, then, then that's how I can be able to utilize two family service coordinators, so that they're working together as a team to outreach those families that can be part of the walking school bus. So that's kind of where we're at right now on this.
Well, then they get to school, and you can offer them a hot breakfast.
Absolutely. And... A walking school bus t-shirt?
And what, and, and also, I mean, I would imagine, a lot of these kids, their parents don't get them up, so alarm clock, a $5 alarm clock might be a very...
But the interesting thing, Becky, is that the different people that we talked to, they said, "It was all about empowering the kids." All of a sudden, the kids that never got out of bed, or, you know, we know we have staff that are going into homes and waking kids up. I think that's insanity. We can't do that in school.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, absolutely.
But then, but then knowing that someone cares, whether they're there or not that morning, I'm so glad to see.
Yeah.
I'm so glad you're here. This is five days in a row.
Yeah.
That's what it takes.
And it's all about fun, it's all about education, walking to school, looking at the environment, making it fun, so.
Now, the walking school bus, does that involve parents as well?
Well, we don't find, the, the studies have shown that parents don't tend to be the volunteers. So we're, we would be looking on for Salve, community people. If parents do volunteer, that's great. And we also talked about, you know, as we get bigger with this, you know, maybe we could have remote vocations at C.C.R.I. and for biking, you know, that there would be groups of parents that would be willing to drive kids to bike up to Pell. You know, so there's, it could get bigger than what our intent was, but right now, our whole focus is on the one mile radius of students around Pell that are most chronic truant.
That's great.
That's great.
Kim, we have, we have a meeting at 6 o'clock, so we've got to move on.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's great.
I think we're at item number eight. Looks like Superintendent Dennis.
You've seen the revenue reports already.
You want these back, right?
Enrollment, the enrollment reports are listed. Superintendent Dennis' update is...
As presented.
As, oh, gee, as presented.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, meeting and agenda items, I guess we're trying to put together a meeting to look at budget for the future. Any other specific questions for meetings?
Are we going to do a meeting next week for the budget?
Well, I don't know. Other people have commitments too, so we're going to have to figure out who's got commitments and when.
Try it soon.
Move for a jar in German?
Someone.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.